I think we're ready.
Mascot, we'll call the meeting to order, but first I want to read that notice to hold teleconference meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D David point zero two one. Due to the current federal state emergency declaration and guidance about limiting person to person contact due to COVID nineteen pandemic by action of the school board of the Pelican Rapids School District, all future meetings of the Pelican Rapids School Board will be conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes thirteen D David point zero two one. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means until further notice. One or more board members may participate by telephone or other electronic means in accordance with Minnesota Statutes thirteen D David point zero two one. Members of the public are not permitted to attend this meeting due to the current health pandemic. Persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location via Zoom. Link to this meeting will be posted on our district website. Public comment for school board meetings during opportunity for visitors to speak may be submitted as follows. And this is an email address, Barb Brookley's email address. It's B R I P L E Y at PelicanRapids.K twelve dot MN dot U S. And this will also be the email address for the truth to taxation portion of the meeting. Well, should we call the meeting to order? So we have everybody here, here and online. Let's stand and give the pledge of allegiance.
Fledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the religion of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord Jesus Christ.
Welcome, everybody. So nod if you can hear me okay before we get going. Okay. Rudy did nod, but I think his face is there. Anyway, first item up is going to be approve the meeting agenda. I don't believe we have any changes or additions on the agenda.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes.
Mike, it may be a question, but yeah, I think it will be. For discussion purposes with regard to the motion to approve the agenda. But subdivision E of section nine, the consent items. I would. I'd like to see the last two items be removed to the business items. Based on my understanding, their consent items typically are those types of items that are done on a regular basis without a whole lot of input or discussion. And I can't recall any sort of discussion we've had at prior meetings with regard to the contracts themselves.
Okay.
So I guess with that said, I would move to approve the agenda with the exception of pulling approve the contract of Adolfo Martinez as finance director for July one twenty twenty one to June thirty twenty twenty three and approve the contract with Brian Court, the superintendent for July twenty twenty one to June thirty twenty twenty four so that it is. So that the one with regard to Mr. Martinez would be ten subdivision G under business items and the one with regard to Mr. Court would be ten subdivision H under business items.
Then there's nothing to say, we can't discuss each of these individually as a.
Okay, awesome. Well, then, I got the motion, but my next question then is how do we typically go about allocating which ones fall under the consent items versus which ones fall under the business items? And I, I would like that to be, I don't know if that could be part of the discussion right now. And I know Barb, I know you send out the minutes. And it's my understanding that they, or excuse me, not the minutes, the agenda, but it's my understanding that the agenda is put together by you and administration. Is that correct? And I don't necessarily need to know every single situation because for a year, for the last year or so that I've been on the board or two now. It really hasn't come up, but I noticed, you know, for example, there's a resignation, a retirement, there's two retirements under the business items for approval and they're a discussion. And there's one resignation in the consent item. And I know resignation is not synonymous with retirement. What goes in when determining which one should fall under a consent item and which one should fall under a business item?
So we, we discussed this, there's two letters to read with the retirement. So we want to be able to read those letters. So we were doing one at each time for the retirement. That's why we put them there, otherwise we would have put them above. Now we can read your letters tonight.
Well, Mike, I mean, I.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm just saying we can't discuss them individually.
What I'm wondering is moving forward, if there's things to be discussed because, and I'm not, I'm not necessarily concerned about the, the, I mean, there's, there's always certainly going to be consent items perhaps and business items that are going to be distinguishable. But it's been my understanding, and this is in response to you, Mike, that we could still discuss those contracts even though they would be consent items agenda, under the consent item portion of the agenda. I'm just trying to reconcile that between what Mr. Corp says, you know, we put that in the business so that we can read the letters.
Sure.
And if the general idea is to place consent items as such and to identify them as such because there likely won't be any discussion, then. I don't know, I think there should be some sort of uniformity with that when it comes to our board meetings. And I'm not suggesting there hasn't in the past. But I don't mean to go on and on about that. I do have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, and I, I did just brush it off. Uh, Mr. Ness, you know, the, his preference is always to put it in the consent items when I can for the contracts, but I'd be more than happy to bump into the business item.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm just saying we can discuss.
And maybe that might not be a second to my motion either. But that, that's my motion.
Motion by Greg to approve the consent item with the exception of the last two of the contract for Rudy Martinez and Brian Court. He moved to the business item. We have a second. Also, and a second by Mike. So that was to approve the meeting agenda. Okay. Okay, any discussion on moving now items and approving the agenda? Hearing no discussion, all in the favor of approving the motion regarding the agenda, signify by saying aye, that'll be a roll call. So Brittany?
Aye.
Yeah? Aye. Mike?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Barb says there's a denny. Okay. We will move on to the truth and taxation presentation by Mr. Martinez. Want to take it away?
Yep, I'm getting ready here. I'm trying to share my screen. Bill, can you take a look and see? Give me the capability to share screens.
Okay, you should be able to.
That Rudy, you're, you're, you might have the floor now. Okay.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, so truth and taxation, a, it's a meeting we hold every year. This is to give the taxpayers in our district the opportunity to ask questions regarding where the numbers are coming from. We can answer any questions regarding to the, how their particular property taxes are computed. But in terms and purpose for this particular meeting, know that when we started the process, we proposed that, we proposed the maximum levy at that point was three point nine million dollars. There were two adjustments in our levy process for which I appealed to MBE and we bought, we won both cases. That brought our levy numbers to a little over four million dollars. So tonight, the board has to certify the new levy for the amount of four million twenty one and fifty four dollars and two cents. That is the maximum number that we have. Once you guys certify, then I go into the state, get it approved and send it to our county auditors and that should be the process. Couple of things that impact the levy computation, which will continue to move forward is we just finished, we just finished the closing of refinancing two of our bonds. So over the next 10 years, we're, we are going to see substantial savings for our taxpayers. So at the end of the net impact of the two bonds that we refinance, we're a little over eighteen million dollars and our taxpayer should see about a one point eight million dollars in savings over 10 years. So what that means for our taxpayers is that over the next 10 years, their property tax impact regarding the school district should continue to come down, again, taking care of our taxpayers. Another piece that will continue to provide our taxpayers good relief is the school bond ad credit that was initiated by the state of Minnesota to help rural communities. That particular percentage is going to continue to go up. Essentially, it helps our farmers. Our farmers should see that tax impact continue to go down over the next four years, again, to help our taxpayers. And this is an ad credit that is done by the state of Minnesota. So what we need, what we need to do today is simply have the board go ahead and pass a motion to certify for this particular dollar amount. And that should be it, unless we have any questions from any taxpayers or the board.
Barb says she doesn't have any responses on her email. And there's nobody present here that I, that I see. I think we'll conclude the tax, tax portion of this. And we'll keep monitoring the email just in case there are.
I'll make a motion to approve the truth and taxation presentation.
Do we need a motion second for that?
It's later in the agenda.
Oh, that's just the presentation. Gotcha, that's right.
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
Scratch them.
All right. We are going to move on. Brian Stavender from Line Bailey is here to present the audit for Pelican Rapids.
Right, Bernie, can you make me host again?
Welcome, Brian.
Hi, good evening, thank you.
How are you doing?
Very good. Are you able to assign me now as, as host so I can share temporarily?
Oh, sure. There, I think I have the ability there. Okay, you should be able to show.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Is it working?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much for having me tonight. I will be walking you through the executive summary, which is a, a high level summarized version of the audit that was completed for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty. I know Rudy shared these results with you a couple of weeks ago and to my knowledge, nothing has changed. So I talked with Rudy earlier today, sounds like very good discussion and commentary surrounding, surrounding this executive summary a couple of weeks ago. So I'll go through probably a little quicker than normal, but I'll definitely pause to make sure that there's opportunities for any questions or added comments. And so let's get going here. The audit results, district received a clean, unmodified audit opinion. That's really what you want when you seek out an audit. It means that in the full audit itself, there are no material misstatements. Everything is fairly presented. All of the required accounting disclosures are included. Something to note this year that is different than in the past is that within the general fund, the student activity accounts and the scholarship funds are now included. Previously, those were in the full audit, but not included in the general fund. They now are in the general fund. I'll point that out when we get to some specific slides. That was due to a new accounting standard that was implemented as of July first, twenty nineteen, so the beginning of the fiscal year. And along with that, state statute in Minnesota was also changed. So really forced all school districts across the state to incorporate these accounts now within the general fund. So it is a change, but as a change, thankfully, that all districts went through. And like I said, I'll point out where that had an impact on your financial statements. As we go through the audit, we also, if we have any findings, we present those to you, we share those with you. And there's really two areas where we have the opportunity to report findings. One would be within the, the financial statements itself, and that normally is across the entire district, in the operations of the district. Do we have any internal control deficiencies? We have a segregation of duties, preparation of financial statement material journal entries. These are three common findings, not only within this school district, but a lot of school districts and a lot of smaller governments across the state, across the country. When you have a smaller office staff, generally these three findings come with it. I hate the called findings because really it's just some communication with you that we as the auditors were more involved during the audit process and we, we do, we do assist with that. We also had some legal compliance findings. These were all related to student activities, again, common within this district and a lot of other school districts across the state, our student activity findings. Student activities are a unique situation within school districts because so many different people are involved, all the student advisors, or I'm sorry, sorry, all the advisors, all the students. So there is more of an opportunity for some compliance issues. So these three compliance issues, inactive fund, failure to have proper signature on the student activity check request, improper student activity fund. Again, nothing to take lightly, but fairly common just due to how many individuals are involved in this process. So before we get into the numbers part of the presentation, I'll pause there, see if you have any questions on the audit process, the results, the findings.
I don't hear any, Brian.
Okay, cash and investments. So it's probably an overused term, but cash is king in this year, I believe it's a term we should be using. Very, very important in unique circumstances such as a global pandemic, to have cash on hand. Cash is really what can help you through these unique situations. You know, the last time that something like, something like this happened where it was a unique situation was right after the, kind of the, the recession and the collapse back in two thousand and eight. That really, really hurt the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota struggled for a good two to three years balancing their own budget. Part of them balancing their budget was to negatively impact the cash flow of school districts across the state. This was kind of the tail end of coming out of those, those bad years for the state of Minnesota. But you can see what a different spot you're in. Back then, you know, the low point in twenty twelve of just over half a million dollars to coming out of that, strengthening your cash and investments dipped down the last few years and rebounded very nicely in twenty twenty, about three point nine million, and this is across the entire district, about three point nine million in cash and investments. Again, really, really helps in these unique times to get through without having to rely on additional debt or borrowing to pay your bills. We'll analyze this in a different format when we get to fund balance and looking at individual funds, but overall a good, strong cash position at the end of twenty twenty. So that was across the entire district. Now we're going to get into the individual funds of the district, the general fund, really the main operating fund. That's where most or, most or all of your educational activities take place. We're also going to look a little bit later at food service, community service and debt service. So really think about all those funds, exclude those. This is the general fund, the main operating fund. So before we get into the numbers or just the financial results, I always like to point out the ADM serve, really the student counts. This is what generally drives revenues in the general fund. You can see here, good stability, a little bit of a dip in the last few years, really stable from nineteen to twenty, not real significant fluctuations, which mean generally your revenue streams are going to be fairly consistent. So that's just kind of a heads up on where that's been in the last 10 years. On the general fund in fiscal year twenty, so for the entire year worth of operations, this is the budget to actual. The first two columns are the budget columns, the first one being the original budget that was adopted likely in the spring, early summer of twenty nineteen, prior to the fiscal year beginning. There were some slight adjustments to the budget throughout the year. That's represented in the second column. The final budget numbers are right there. You can see overall bottom line, real, real close, light drop, but overall anticipating a deficit spend in that general fund. This third column is the actual column, so providing you the actual revenues and expenditures for fiscal year twenty. And then the far right column is really what the column that I will focus on, the variance between these actual results and the final budget. So we're going to go pretty high level here. I know you had some good discussions with Rudy a couple of weeks ago and we can certainly dive into the details if we need to, but I'm going to keep it pretty high level. On the revenue side, anticipated on your budgets, roughly ten million dollars in total revenue. You can see you came in over budget, taking in about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars more in revenue than anticipated, a good, strong eight point eight percent positive variance between your actual revenues and your budgeted, really a representation of a conservative approach to this fiscal year twenty budget, you know, trying to increase the fund balance, trying to increase the reserves. That conservative approach resulted in a good positive variance comparing actual to final. On the expenditure side, very similar results, budgeted roughly ten point three million in both budgets here for total expenditures out of the general fund. You came in less than that, just under nine point eight million. So that's a positive variance as well, meaning you spent less than what you anticipated. You can see the dollar amount there, five hundred and sixty six thousand, five forty, five and a half percent positive variance. So when you have a positive variance both on the revenues and the expenditures, that's going to have a significant impact, a positive impact on your fund balance. When all was said and done, remember when I started this page, you're looking at a deficit spend of three hundred and twenty five to three hundred and thirty thousand, you actually came out with a pretty significant positive budget variance, increased the fund balance, revenues over expenditures by about one point one million. So that is a direct contribution or increase to your fund balance, really your reserves that you utilize going into the future. That was at five hundred and ten thousand at the beginning of the fiscal year with that good, strong results in fiscal year twenty that now is at roughly one point six million. So before we move on to the next slide, I just want you to try to remember these numbers here, really going from about, about a half a million in fund balance to one point six million. So we're going to analyze that in a couple of slides. There's a lot of numbers on here, potentially are some questions or added comments. I want to make sure I pause and allow for any of those to take place. All right, we'll continue on. Very important to have a positive fund balance. Talked about cash on the very first slide. Cash and fund balance aren't exactly the same thing, but very, very close. Generally, your cash balance is going to equal or come close to your fund balance. Fund balance is a mechanism of accounting and unfortunately, there's some non-cash items that can, that can make that a little bit different than cash. But for the most part, cash and fund balance, your reserves. What do you have at the end of the year to carry forward into the future? A few different benefits, it can contribute to a favorable bond rating, a source of working capital when you, when you have cash flow needs, but also unexpected expenditures, revenue shortfalls, whenever you need a cushion to carry you through something unanticipated, unexpected, unique, it's very, very good to have a positive fund balance. So positive fund balance is a good thing. There's plenty categories of fund balance. I'm not really going to get into many of these. I really have you focus on restricted. Don't you love governmental accounting, Liz? Here's your fun. Funds by a third party or what you'll see in the next page, student activities or scholarships. That would be categorized as restricted. Really not necessarily your rainy day fund, not your true reserves, because those have to be spent on certain, in certain categories, on certain things. Definitely a component and an important one, but not so much in your control. What's really in your control are these last two columns. After restricted is accounted for, everything else is really unassigned unrestricted, but you do have the ability to earmark certain funds that would be assigned. Assigned really means, hey, we've got some excess funds, I shouldn't say excess fund, but we've got some funds that are not restricted. We can really use them however we want, but we've got a special project or an area that we want or we intend to spend this money on. We're going to set it aside to really illustrate that we do have a plan for these dollars. Whatever else remains is unassigned. That's truly your reserves or your rainy day fund. So restricted, assigned, unassigned. This next page breaks that out for you. And if you remember from the budget to actual, I asked you to remember, there's that half a million, that's your total fund balance at the beginning of the year, July one, twenty nineteen, so quite a long time ago. Into these different categories, these first two lines are new. They were not in the general fund previously, the student activities and scholarships. Those were transferred over as of July one and now accounted for as a restricted fund balance. So while it is there and it did increase your overall fund balance, it is truly set aside and restricted and can only be used in those, those two categories. There's the half a million dollars to begin with. The middle column is your net change, your revenues exceeding expenditures. This is how it impacted all these different categories. But overall, here's that one point six million. So at the end of the year, here's your one point six million in fund balance. You can see how it's broken down into various restricted categories, again, mostly out of your control, have to be spent on those in those certain areas. Here's your assignment, assigned for deferred maintenance of flooring. So really setting aside some dollars to be used into the future for maintenance of flooring. Doesn't have to be spent on that. It is definitely your intention to spend it on that, but it is considered officially by the state of Minnesota to be unrestricted, but for your purposes, you have internally designated it for these purposes. So after all of that is accounted for, this is really your true rainy day fund, your true reserves, just under one point four million in the unassigned fund balance carried forward into the future. We'll analyze that in a little different format in a couple of slides, but I'll pause there. There was a lot to take in on fund balance, just to see if there's any questions. Next slide. It is a representation of your total fund balances for the last 10 years. You can see back in twenty eleven. You can see back in 2011, a fairly significant fund balance dropped down to about a total of 1.5 million. It's been, you know, five years of stable, if not minimal growth. It really dropped in 2018 and 2019 and a really, really nice rebound in 2020. The challenging part of all of this is what does that mean? You know, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money, 1.6 million. That's a lot of true money. But, but we like to flip that. Look at it as a percentage of your budget essentially. What is that as a percentage of your total expenditures or your total operating budget? Your goal generally is to be within these two lines, within 10% to 13%. And I would say within your policy, which that policy was enacted or revised in 2017. This is really your minimum target. Your long-term goal is to have three months' worth of operating expenditures. So when you see anything within these two lines, just know that you're really meeting the minimum of what your board has set as the fund balance goal or fund balance policy. So what we've got here, six out of the 10 years, you've been either within that range or slightly above it. These years are getting pretty low, 2012 and 2013. That's not a lot of cushion. That's not a lot of reserves. You were able to bring it back up in that four-year stretch there. Came back down even a year ago when we were working with you and presenting this. 5.4%, that's a pretty low fund balance, very uncommon that we would see something that low in the school district. So good to see a strong rebound in that fund balance. You're actually slightly above kind of that minimum window that you have. And I would say definitely on your way. And one year, one year, we can't necessarily call it trend, but in talking with Rudy, we seem to have made some continued good progress the first five, six months of this fiscal year. So we would expect this at a minimum to maintain and be stable, if not grow even a little bit more to get closer to that three-month goal of having in your fund balance. So I'll pause there. The next group of slides is to look at all the other funds and then real quick, real high level. General fund being the main operating fund, definitely want to make sure that if you have any questions or added comments that that you're able to provide those. So I'll pause at this time.
I don't have any questions here.
Okay, we'll get through these next few slides. Other funds, so like I said, very high level look, this is just a look at the end of the year fund balance. This is the community service fund. So all of that programming that happens, the revenues and expenditures go in and out. What, at the end of the year, what do you have for fund balance? What do you really have for reserves in that fund? These are just dollar amounts. And this will fluctuate depending on the programming. Sometimes it's impacted by some capital expenditures or a certain program doesn't go as well as planned. So it's not uncommon to see this fluctuate. But really, when I look at this with the exception of 2011, this has been fairly stable. It's, like I said, going to fluctuate. It's going to come up, come down, come up, come down. It's kind of been your cycle, but still very strong reserves and good operations within this community service fund. The next one is the food service fund. This one probably is even more stable than that community service fund. You, you, you serve food. You receive grant revenue, you receive charges for services and you pay, pay to operate that food service fund. There is a fund balance maximum in this food service fund that is a department of education, really written into statute. The maximum is three months' worth of expenditures. That's represented by this line. Essentially, they don't want you making a bunch of money in your food service program. If you do ever exceed that line, which you haven't, you're awfully close in 2020. Last time you did, it was back in 2014. You actually had a four-year stretch of, of being in excess of that, that amount. All that means is that it's more administrative work and it would fall on Rudy. You just have to submit a plan to the department of education of how are you going to spend that back down to get it under that level? So more paperwork essentially. It's not like you're getting money taken away or anything. It's just something to monitor. We put this on there just so you're aware of it. If you ever do exceed it, again, just more work for Rudy, trying to figure out how to get back down under that. But good, strong, steady operations in this food service fund. And then the very last one, debt service funds. You know, these generally don't fluctuate as much when there are more significant capital projects take place and you're issuing debt. That's usually when we see some fluctuation. But once you get into the, you know, really the repayment mode, year to year, you're, you're levying dollars, you're collecting that, that tax levy, you're paying the debt service. Generally, that debt service fund is going to remain consistent. You can see for the most part in the last three years, that has maintained consistency. I would say going forward, I would expect it to be between 50 and 100,000 on an annual basis, but there are some things that can, can fluctuate that a little bit. But good to see that consistency, at least for the last three years. Overall though, no concerns within that, those funds. So I will provide one more opportunity for any questions on anything I talked about, maybe something I didn't or just any added, added comments anyone may have.
Brittany and Ann, I can't see you on the screen, but you're minimized. Do you have any questions?
No.
Ann? Okay. I think we're good with questions.
Well, a big thank you to Rudy and everyone else involved in the audit process, much like what all of us have gone through recently. We, we didn't get to work face to face. We had to do it all virtually, all remotely, which is challenging, of course. But Rudy is wonderful to work with, makes it, makes it actually kind of fun. I don't know if it's, it's necessarily fun for him to go through the audit every year, but he definitely, definitely makes the process easier for us. So appreciate all the work that he's done. We really, really enjoy working with him. Looking forward to, we were talking earlier today. It's only going to be a few months where we're going to reach out to him and say, hey, let's talk about next year's audit. So we'll give him a few months off and then we'll be right back, right back at it. But thanks very much to Rudy and everyone else. Really appreciate the help.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Do you have to? Are you going to get host again?
I should make sure, yeah, you've got the host capabilities.
I didn't give them up.
We're good?
We're good.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Yep, bye.
Okay, we'll move on. We're going to move on to the acknowledgements portion of the agenda. And we want to acknowledge the school district, Marty Carlson, for her eight years of service. Wendy Hoodley for 33 years of service. Kayla Smilch, 23 years of service to the district. And on December 1st, 2020, Pelican Rapids lost one of their longtime super fans. We know that Dwayne Strong. Dwayne and Darlene were at many events that, for as long as I can remember here. So I just want to acknowledge our sympathies to Dwayne's family. And next up is Mike Forstrun. He acknowledges eight years of service with the Pelican Rapids School District on the school board. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Oh, it was a nice thing. Yeah, it was those.
It's a dark corner there. I think I'm okay. Good, thanks.
I'm smiling.
Let me get a close-up of those. Very nice. You are involved. Well. You'll get better.
Yes. I can solve those new problems. There you go. Thank you very much. That's a good one. Thank you very much.
So Mike, this is your last meeting, so.
Yes. I have things to say.
Thank you. Next item will be administrative reports, elementary principal and activities director, Derek Nelson.
Enrollment at the start of December, we were at 426. We want to thank Kayla Smilch for 23 years of service. She taught here at the high school. Taught kindergarten through sixth grade, was leader of the abscess program. And she always has a smile on her face and a false door step, so thank her. She will be here until January 15th. So we do have a few more weeks with her, so thank you to Kayla. Also like to thank Amy King. Amy King was a long-term sub in fifth grade this fall. And she is now going to come to the high school and finish her student teaching in the business department. So thank you for her help filling in this fall. I also like to thank Mr. Forstrun for his service as a school member. And he's very supportive of the school, the activities. He also served as a coach for the school. So thank him for everything. A little more time, now he has time to work on his golf game a little bit more. So thank you, Mike, for everything you've done for us. Looking at hiring Abby Przanke. Abby will take Kayla's spot as the lead abscess teacher. Hire Lexi Dunbauer as the abscess teacher, and that'll fill Abby's spot. Lexi is just finishing her student teaching. She's tuned up with Mrs. Johnson in fifth grade this fall and has been up here to high school with Mrs. Thompson the last several, last month and a half, so should be a good addition to our staff. Also hired Kim Hugood, coming on retirement, to fill in for a long-term sub year in fifth grade. Taking over for Mrs. King until Mrs. Danner is back. We have started our work with Lex Country Services on our instructional leadership team. Our first meeting was on December 10th. Will be meet again on February 8th during our workshop date. And one of our main things is we're looking at curriculum that we're looking, this team will be looking at. We started the year with 93 students, full-time distance learning. We are down to 83 full-time students, distance learning at the elementary. Onto the activities report. Again, we'd like to give our condolences to the Strong family. We always do when I came to a game, if it started at five, that Dwayne and Darlene would be one of the first ones there. And they would always sit in the top row. It took them a few times in our new gym to find their, find their new spot. But once they found it, they're always there. Even when they went south for the winter, they would get on the link and watch every game that they could when they were down south and come back and they were always back for playoff time. So condolences to the Strong family. Mrs. Hoodley, 33 years of service. The last eight, she's been at the activities office. Mrs. Hoodley is a huge sports fan and all Minnesota sports teams. One of her greatest players that she loved is Joe Mauer. And I found a quote from Joe Mauer that I thought was pretty fitting for Mrs. Hoodley. Said, "When things are said and done, I always want to be remembered as a great teammate and a great player." I think that sums Mrs. Hoodley up. She's always a team player. She would do whatever we asked. Didn't matter how much time we gave her. Yep, I can get that done. Yep, I can do that. And did a great job at her job and she will be missed. So thank you, Mrs. Hoodley, for your 33 years of service at Pelican Rapids School. Activities will resume on January 4th. Practices may begin and continue in the case of death. We do not yet know when we can start playing, playing games. We have not given that, the okay on when that can start. We have a meeting tomorrow and supposedly they won't give us a date yet when we can start, but we're supposed to have schedules ready to go. They said hardly you don't know the exact date. Sounds like masks are going to be worn by all participants during the winter season at this time from what we're hearing. So we are busy working on our third winter schedule of the year. We met as ADs the other day to try to get our conference games redone. So we are continuing. There are some guidelines where we can only play two games a week and you cannot play back-to-back days. You have to have a day break in between, so it makes scheduling difficult. A couple of teams that we had on our original schedule. We can't plan out because their breaks that they have don't match with ours. So we're looking for a couple more games that we'll be looking at for the next couple of days here, so. We're trying to get those schedules completed before we go into break. So, and the games we have scheduled, we're hoping we can start that second, third week in January, but not officially a go on those yet. So there might be more rescheduling yet. So. Any questions?
Mr. Watson. Did you say the athletes would be wearing masks?
That's what we're hearing.
For all activities?
That's what we're hearing.
So all activities would be dance, wrestling, basketball.
I don't know about swimming and diving.
Still waiting on swimming and diving, right? How, how does that affect speech? Is that, when does speech season start?
Speech, there is no designated season. A winner begins. Traditionally, ours starts right after the break. From what we're hearing, like the one act play might be virtual where they do it and film it or do it live on the auditorium. And they're also talking about like doing virtual speech meetings. And no official word on that either. They did a virtual debate meet here a couple of weeks ago, the high school way, did, and that seemed to work well for the teams that were involved. So that's what they're looking at, at some virtual event.
Has the Minnesota State High School League offered any information with regard to the type of masks that might be available for the athletes? I don't know. Everybody wears different types of masks. I have one that's probably different than yours. Is there going to be a specific model that all teams and all athletes will be required to utilize or required to use?
Not that we've heard. This fall, we got an email saying that we could not wear gaiters. And then about three days later, we got an email saying you can wear gaiters. So they keep changing what they put out there and seems like a couple of days later, what they put out there changes, so. It's a rapidly evolving situation.
So our students should be at home practicing in whatever extracurriculars they're doing in masks.
That's what we're hearing, but we've got nothing official from the high school yet at this point. So.
There's a, you've received something official about masks, though, right?
No, that's just what the, kind of the rumor that the coaches associations have heard. And they kind of hinted towards it, but we've got nothing official yet. The guidelines that we received in November for winter activities did not involve that, but all those guidelines have now changed. So we have not got updated guidelines yet for winter activities. Thank you. Any other questions?
It's like, no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance director, Mr. Martinez.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Go ahead and air my screen one more time. All right, so in terms of the treasure report for the end of November 30th, pretty good month for us. Pretty good month for us. We started with our investments at $2.6 million. And then we ended our investments at $2.9. We start to receive a lot of the federal grant payouts, whether it's the Corona Relief Act or the grant that we receive for the community fitting hub. You see those that were received into our investments. So again, pretty good cash on hand. As far as the main operating, main operating funds. Very, very common for the general fund to be in deficit. The state's always been playing catch-up with us. Excuse me. So we started the general fund balance with a deficit of one fifty-two. And that increased to 1.2, 1.2 million dollars. Accounts payable were high, again, that is, normally we spend about anywhere between four to five. But with everything with the pandemic and a lot of the online platforms that we're paying for our educators. You see that cost to go up a little bit. Payroll was also a little bit high, but that had to do with the fall activities concluding and then paying coaches. This adjustment that you see here is simply essentially a payment that belonged to different funds with our levy. So we receive some of our levy dollars, an additional payment for the current fiscal year that I had to distribute to the other funds. Food service, pretty good funds. We received about $1,800 in, in fees from parents or students for milk or lunches. We paid accounts payable of $59,000. This is all the food that we buy to serve meals. And then we paid salaries of about $12,000. Again, this is an adjustment from the 164 for levy payments that we'd receive into the food service fund. Total cash on hand, 167. A community ad started with 118, received some dollars from our levy. Only, not a lot of programming for a community, community ad right now. So we just had minimal, minimal accounts payable of $894. Payroll was 14,000. And again, adjustment just from this levy payment up here of 6.48. So total cash on hand for community ad was 117. Debt service, this is where we pay all of our bonds. And, and like Brian Stavenger was saying, we collect levy monies throughout the year and then we accumulate them. And then in February, we have the large principal and interest payment of our bond. So right now, we're sitting at, at the end, we're sitting at 1, 1.7 million dollars. You're going to see this drop significantly on the February treasure report. Again, that is when our bonds are due for payment. The trust fund is our scholarship, so we received $600 in contributions for scholarships that increased the cash in our scholarship fund to $30,000. Our OPEB trust, this is the trust that we have where we pay a lot of our post-retirement benefits. That sunset or that benefit that is now sunset. Again, this, this number of $87,000, it shows here, but eventually we'll pull it from, from this 116 and they will flush it out. OPEB is when we bonded for those benefits. So this one is now pretty much at the end of its existence. This $15,000 that you guys see here, I'm going to make an appeal to the state to see if we can distribute this $5,000 to any of our other funds for operational purposes. Our petty cash account went from $2,000 all the way to $184,000. The reason why that went up significantly was because of our close in our bonds. So last week, Wednesday and Thursday, I was, I was glued to my computer and the phone because I was pretty much refinancing our bonds. And one of the, the two agreements that we had with our bonds have a clause that whoever is the final bidder has to give the district 2% of the proceeds in good faith. So in order to do that exchange, I had to provide our banking information. So what that is, is the $180,000 that I, that it went up, it had to do with the bonds. Now that we finalized these bonds, I have to pay the money now back and give it to our, pretty much our fiscal agent, which is Wells Fargo, who holds our, who holds our public debt or our mortgage for our bond. So this 180,000, $884,000 is going to significantly go down again. But just keep notice of that fluctuation. Again, it had to do with the 2% good faith proceeds that happened during the closing of the bonds. Student activity accounts went from 168 up to 173. Pretty good money coming in into our student activity accounts and we only paid about $84,000. So that is what I have for you guys for the treasury report. The rest, again, it's just collateral that we receive. We have substantial collateral to cover us, so we're, we are good there. The next pages that you'll see is journal entries. Again, some of the journal entries that you see, for example, this first one has to do with the community foot grant that we have to process at the, at the end of each week. This is, this particular journal entry is simply to balance our books at the end in terms of how the cash moves from one fund to the other. It was a little bit of an entry error, so you see me saying here that this particular journal entry is to undo this one up here. But again, it's just, it's non-material journal entries to help us balance our books. The last page is payables. So again, a pretty, pretty standard month for us. You're able to see from which bank we paid out. So here's our general funding account and you see the type of payment, whether it's wire, credit card or check. And as you scroll down on your payables, you should be able to find out the other banking account. So here is the $8,000 that came out of student activity checking account. And then here is $25 that came out of the petty cash checking account. And this simply had to do with the wires that came in with the 2% good faith proceeds from the closing of the bond. So I'll stop there and see if anybody has questions regarding the treasurer's report of the money going in out of the district. A couple of things to note on the board agenda, on the board agenda, just as, as we go into the business items. You know, except audit report from Brian Stavenger. Again, pretty good, pretty good year in terms of our finances for our school district. We're hoping to grow and stabilize within the next two to three years, which is, which is very crucial for us to make sure that we continue to grow that fund balance, grow our reserves. Also approve the levy limitation and certification that is very crucial. We cannot forget to do that as it sets, it sets the revenue stream for the following year. And then the last minute item that we sent you guys earlier today is the memorandum of understanding with the union. The memorandum of understanding came about because of the shortage that we. What we are doing, what we are proposing with the memorandum of understanding is simply to increase the pay from $15 to $25. And this happens with somebody from, from our administration. Whether it's Mr. Bergman or Mr. Corv, ask a teacher to give up their prep time to cover a colleague. Again, the key words is has to be asked by administration. And we're doing that again, just to help cover, help cover our teachers. Just because we have no shortage or because we have shortage in substitutes. And a lot of our pairs are being reassigned to all different parts. So this memorandum of understanding is not to amend the master agreement, but to amend the practice of us having to pay them $15 now to $25. The union is very comfortable with it. We went through all the language and the memorandum of understanding has been reviewed by legal. And again, that is within the business items. That is all that I have for you guys. Thank you again to Mike for being a strong supporter of me and of great finance things that we're doing. And Wendy as well. And, and to Mrs. Miltage, I was one of her first students that, that when she came into the district, we didn't even have a classroom for, for her. I was eight years old and she was teaching me English in the elementary voice locker room. Back in the Keith Klein days. For that, and that's all I have for you guys.
Hey, thank you Rudy. Next up, Mr. Corv, superintendent high school principal. Okay, Roman, the high school, we're at 414 students in December here. Started off with 419, so we're down five students. Thank you to Mrs. Carlson for eight years. Worked at the high school as a special education parent professional and an ELL parent professional, which means we need to hire an ELL parent professional. We have opened up the position and taken application. Thank you to Mrs. Hoodley for 33 years. Like Mr. Nelson said, as a special education para and assistant AD. She helps coach volleyball, cheerleading advisor and work clock in volleyball game. So tomorrow, we're going to recognize her. Have a little celebration in the comments spread out and from two to four. So feel free to step in and, and thank Mrs. Hoodley. At three o'clock, we'll have a little short presentation for her. High school PLCs are focused this year is on victories and challenges going through the pandemic. As we go through the school year, we're looking at what's going well, what's not going well. And this next meeting here we have in January, our focus is going to be on solutions to our challenges. What, what can we do to improve them? So that's what we'll be focusing on in January. Few superintendent items, phase one and phase two trainings were offered in December. So we completed phase one, phase two. Mrs. Welch, who will be coming on board in January, has attended those. MSBA reorganization meeting, Mr. Carter and Mrs. Ripley and myself attended that meeting here last week. And then tomorrow, we're going to have new board member training for Mrs. Welch. And that'll be tomorrow morning in the office. The last executive order that came out from the governor. The focus was on elementary, bringing elementary back into in-person. Again, you have to remember, this is statewide. So in the Twin Cities, there's not many elementary schools that have been in-person. So the focus was on by January 18th to make a plan to get back elementary students into in-person learning. They did say in our superintendent conference call that the next focus after elementary will be middle school. They did not give like a timeframe or anything like that, but the first goal is elementary and then start focusing on, on the middle school. So our goal here, we've met in our group with our COVID team, is to focus on here getting through break and then getting back into our model starting on January 12. So it'll be distance learning, the 21st this week through the 23rd through Wednesday. Just reminder, January 5th will be a staff workday. And then January 6th through the 8th will be distance learning K-12. January 12th, elementary will go back to in-person and high school will be hybrid. There are a few other items that were in the executive order, order that are being discussed. So there's been some meetings between some NDE officials and superintendent groups, MSBA, things like that. So the discussion is that they came out with masks and shields. So what they're saying right now is starting January 18th, they want to see all staff in masks and then in shield. So that's a lot of discussion going on. I don't know if there's going to be any changes to that. We're going to kind of wait and see here, but we might have to put some things in place by January 18th if it's not changed. I think that's kind of it for like the dates. Last item is thank you to Mr. Forstgen for everything he's done here for us, for the staff, administration. Finishing up with the building project, helping with the operation levy, hiring administration. Very involved, very supportive. I just want to say thank you. I think other than that, some of the dates coming up that I didn't talk about. End of quarter two is going to be January 15th. So we have three days here this week and then we come back after break. And then it's going to be January 15th, that'll be end of quarter two, semester one. Then high school's going to have teacher workshop, January 18th. Parent-teacher conferences will be February 22nd. We do not know where we'll be at, if we'll be virtual again or in-person. Kind of see how things are going in the community, county numbers, and then in-house. And we'll make a decision a few weeks before that. Any questions? Been very busy, it's a lot of meetings. This week is kind of a nice, a little bit quieter week here with meetings going on. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item up will be consent items. Item A, approved board meeting minutes from November 9th, 2020 regular meeting. November 13th, 2020 special meeting. And November 18th, 2020 special meeting. Item B, financial claims and November bills. C, treasurer's report. Item D, accept donations. The Viking Elementary First Grade Literacy Lunch, VFW of $300. To the FFA and Minnesota National Bank, $125. To the FFA from ZOTUS, $38. To the scholarship in memory of John Matheson, Judy and Paul Tabit, $50. Scholarships in memory of Marion Haugrude, anonymous, $15. Personnel, approve the resignation of Marty Carlson as ELL para effective December 23rd, 2020. Hire Abby Frazanki as abscess, excuse me, teacher full-time. Hire Lexie Dunbar as abscess teacher. Hire Kim Haugrude as long-term substitute. Extend the leave for Charlotte Satter until approximately April 15th, 2020. Motion by Greg, accept the consent items. Do we have a second? Second by Brenda?
Yep.
Motion by Greg and second by Brenda. Any discussion on the consent items?
I just want to note that they on letter E, extend the leave for Charlotte Center until that's going to be for 15, 21.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent items, signify by saying aye and it'll be roll call. Ann?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Hi, Greg.
Hi.
Brenda?
Aye.
Consent items carried. Onto business items. Prove the 2019, 2020 audit report as presented by Brian Stavenger from Ike Bailey. We just went through the audit presentation. We just need to approve the business items.
I will make a motion, approve the 2019, 2020 audit report presented by Brian Stavenger from Ike Bailey.
Motion by Mike, your second.
Second.
Okay, Greg beat you, but I'll look next time. Any discussion on the I, the audit report?
Maybe because I've been here eight years, but it seems like it's much easier to follow.
Yeah.
Played out very nicely, I thought.
Yeah. It's always easier to listen to positive.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it's more fun than.
Any other discussion on the audit report? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the audit report, signify by saying aye, it'll be roll call again. Ann?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Hi.
Hi.
Greg.
Hi.
Brenda?
Aye.
Hi. Audit report carries. Prove the retirement of Kalis Miltage as elementary teacher effective January 15th, 2021. I believe I have a letter here I'll read. The District 548 is with mixed emotions and I'm writing to inform you that I'll be officially retiring as of January 15th, 2021. Difficult to find the words to adequately thank you for all the love and support I've received from our school district's administration. Difficult to find the words to adequately thank you for all the love and support I've received from our school district's administration, members of our school board, colleagues, friends from throughout the community, and all the amazing students I've been blessed to have taught here in Pelican Rapids. Sincerely, Kayla Smilfitch. Do we have a motion to approve Kayla Smilfitch's retirement? Motion by Greg?
Hi.
Second by Ann? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and we roll call again, Brenda?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Hi. Brittany?
Hi.
Ann?
Hi.
Motion carries. Enjoy your retirement, Kayla. Item C, approve the retirement of Wendy Hoodley as A D assistant effective December twenty-third, two thousand twenty. They also have a letter, says, dear Pelican Rapids School Board and Administration, this letter is to inform you that I'll be retiring from Pelican Rapids Schools effective December twenty-third, two thousand twenty. I have been employed by the, with the Pelican Rapids School District since fall of nineteen eighty-five, when I was hired as coach volleyball. In nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-seven, I was hired to work in the special education department. In the spring of two thousand thirteen, the job as administrative assistant opened up, and I was awarded the position. Pelican Rapids Schools has been my home away from home for thirty-three years. In that time, I've gotten to know countless students, worked with numerous staff members, and have attended hundreds of athletic and extracurricular events. Thank you for the opportunity you've given me, I truly appreciate it, and will miss the students, staff, coaches, and wonderful administration for whom I have worked. Sincerely, Wendy Hoodley. I'll make a motion to approve the retirement of Wendy Hoodley.
Second.
Second by Mike? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, by roll call, Ann?
Hi.
Brittany?
Hi.
Hi, hi, Greg?
Hi.
Brenda?
Hi.
Hi. Enjoy your retirement, Wendy. Approve the levy limitation and certification report, two thousand twenty, A M O, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Martinez just need to briefly explain that, or?
Kind of worded here. Yep, you guys can go ahead and uh pass a motion to approve the levy certification for the amount of four million twenty-one thousand fifty-four dollars and two cents.
Four thousand?
Four million twenty-one thousand fifty-four and two cents, so this figure right here.
Okay, all right.
I make a motion to approve the levy limitation and certification report, twenty twenty, A M O, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of four million twenty-one thousand fifty-four dollars and two cents.
We have a motion by Brenda, second by Greg. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and roll call, Brenda?
Hi.
Hi, Greg?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Brittany?
Hi.
Ann?
Hi.
Motion carries. Next item up, approve the world's best workforce summary and achievement and integration progress report as discussed at the December seventh work session.
Yeah, we went through that um report um at the work session in December, um, myself and Becky Walter. So any questions?
No changes or updates?
No changes, yep, nothing's the same.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the world's best workforce summary and achievement and integration progress report. Motion by Greg. And I'm second. Any discussion on the world's best workforce summary achievement? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, bill by roll call again, Brenda?
Hi.
Hi, Greg?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Ann? And Brittany?
Hi.
Motion carries. Next item up is to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Pelican Rapids Education Association regarding payment rate for teacher preparation time during the ongoing COVID-nineteen pandemic. We have an M O U in the board packet or attachment on the website also. And this was already, Rudy had already discussed this with us, so. Yep.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Brenda, second by Ann? Any discussion? This is kind of worded like a resolution, I don't need to read it as such, do I? Okay. Just the memorandum of understanding, okay. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the M O U, signify by saying aye, and roll call, Ann? Brittany?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Brenda?
Hi.
Hi. M O U carries. Next item up. Be approve the contract with Rodolfo Martinez as finance director from July first, two thousand twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. All board members were emailed a copy of uh both Mr. Corse and Mr. Martinez's contract. Uh, Mike and I met with both of them, uh negotiating contract, and I guess, Mike, do you have any comments?
No, I'd just say it was a pretty easy process and um I think we get good value for both of them for our money.
I think what we looked at was uh market, market's gone considerably since just a few years ago. And um looked at duties as far as what responsibilities they've undertaken with the administration, realigning them. And so I think what we came up with was was fair, but you guys had the opportunity to review it?
I have, I guess one of the reasons I wanted to place it in the business items was, you answered one of the questions already. I I I, it was my understanding that John, you and Mike were involved with the with the negotiation and discussion of the terms and conditions. Um, just wanted to just find out who was all involved with that process, and then also uh what factors entered into the equation when it came to uh coming to some of the terms and conditions that you uh incorporated into the agreement. You know, in terms of the the salary and the corresponding benefits contemplated in Mr. uh Martinez's contract, um, it's both your understanding, John, and Mike, your understanding that that's consistent with with what the districts, um, what the district needs to do in order to maintain and keep the quality of of uh somebody like Mr. Martinez in in our position, is that correct? Did you say that? Yes, I I know you kind of already got to that.
No, so we, he is our technology director on top of finance director.
He's our technology director too?
Yep. Even without that, he falls in line salary-wise for the district outside.
And then the corresponding benefits, have those changed throughout the years? Were there some modifications that were material in any way versus any prior contracts with finance directors? Now, I know that prior finance directors were not also the technology directors, is that correct?
Correct.
So I can see how there is some distinguishing characteristics between Mr. Martinez and some of his predecessors in that regard, but the benefits similar to the compensate, to the actual salary, um, from both of your perspectives seem to be right on point to do what the district needs to do to stay competitive and and to retain Mr. Martinez's services, like the quality of services.
Yeah, so compared to his last contract, uh benefit generally stays the same, there might have been a little here and there, but it was mainly the wage that got adjusted to bring him up to market.
The only question I had on the Mr. Martinez's contract, I have it right here. Article nine, section three, uh, this is in the other benefits section. It limits participation in the benefits of this article is limited only to directors who select one of the following vendors. My question is, where does that list of vendors come from? And why, why would Mr. Martinez, assuming this contract is approved by both parties? What is the, where does that list come from, I guess is what my question is.
That list is um part of our four oh three B agreement.
Okay.
And plan.
Okay.
That's a list that's been established when we came up with our our four oh three B plan.
Okay. Thanks, Barb.
Yep.
So, any, any more discussion?
I'll approve the contract with Rodolfo Martinez as finance director for July one, two thousand twenty-one to June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, you have a motion by Greg?
Second.
Okay, second by Mike? Any additional discussion uh on Mr. Martinez's contract?
Not so much discussion, but uh since I've started serving the district on the board, I've just thought the world with the the way Rudy, you present the information to the school uh board and uh your willingness to be available to answer questions, and all those things are very, very important to to me, and I think according to me, the district, so. I think it's great.
I agree.
I'll agree, it'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor approving Mr. Martinez's contract, signify by saying aye, it'll be roll call, Ann?
Hi.
Brittany?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Brenda?
Hi.
Hi. Contract carries. Next item up, approve the contract with Brian Clark, the superintendent for July twenty, July twenty-twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This was also sent out to our board members, and Mike and I had also met, and um same thing, the delegation of duties and bringing up to market. I think some of the data that we've had to bring up to market was maybe a year behind, but I think we're comfortable with where we're at. It's another thing too, where market is considerably different than it was a few years ago for wages. I do think with the elimination of some of the administration, I think it's, I think we're getting a pretty good value again, so.
I I um, that that answers one of the questions I had too, is I just wanted to confirm, and please continue to question my my logic and 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 lack of understanding, don't question my mask or shoes. But it leads Bill to explain to attack my lack of understanding of some of the protocols that that are in place with regard to negotiating some of these things. So, you know, I certainly recognize that um Mr. Carter and Mr. Forsgren, Forsgren are on the negotiations committee is, I guess, what should I call that, the uh? Do you mean, is it?
We're not, we're not legal, negotiation committee.
Negotiation team?
Sure.
And uh I've always felt comfortable with those actions, and I, it's my opinion that both of those individuals are on there for a reason and asked to properly evaluate and identify any sort of issues and other um things that enter into the equation when it comes to these contracts. I assume, similar to the line of questions I had with regard to Mr. Martinez and the salary and the corresponding benefits, I know you've already addressed it, but those were all taken into consideration by the both of you in relationship to what the current merit market is is indicating and driving. Speaking for me personally, and I appreciate um not only, like I mentioned with regard to Rudy, but uh Mr. Corp in his capacity as the interim superintendent, um, I know there has not been any formal evaluation of Mr. Corp um during the interim, it's been kind of a tough time to do it in light of uh what's going on in our world. And I'm very comfortable with that, um, especially in light of the fact that he's shown us great leadership, uh, not only through the last six months or so as as the interim superintendent, but the many, many years preceding that as a high school principal. I did have a couple of specific questions with regard to the to the contract itself. Well, this, again, this is where I encourage everybody to continue to question my my understanding of of the school board actions. So when, you know, if, when Mr. Corp is hired as super, full-time superintendent under a three-year contract, what happens then to our secondary principal position?
Still, he stays as.
He stays as.
As principal.
Okay, yeah, okay. So will it be a separate contract for the principal position? Because I know this just refers to specifically the superintendent position.
So we should probably.
Is there language in there?
Because we had Christie Hastings' duties.
I didn't see any, I, you know, and I read it this afternoon, I didn't see anything specifically, and that's why
Yeah.
I thought either I had a huge misunderstanding or that perhaps we were going to entertain the idea of looking for a secondary principal. I didn't see any language in this contract regarding Mr. Corp's continuation to serve as principal as well. Um, I could be wrong though, I I did read it pretty thoroughly, um.
Yeah, if we would have changed what what the model we're under, we would have definitely brought it to the board. Probably just overlooked with not telling Christie Hastings that she knows, but.
And I'm looking at this, I guess, I'm in favor of this contract. Um, I know there hasn't been any motion yet, but if if Mr. Corp is gonna serve in both capacities, I think both parties, the the district and Mr. Corp, I think there should be some provision in the contract that contemplates his service as principal. I know section one talks about in article eleven, this is on page six. It it uh, it's, it discusses outside activities. And it says, you know, superintendent shall devote full-time and due diligence to the affairs and activities of the school district. You know, arguably, that could include acting as principal, but I think out of fairness to Mr. Corp, um, we should maybe perhaps consider um incorporating some additional. to Mr. Corp, um, we should maybe perhaps consider incorporating some additional language with regard to the principal position. And then, one of the other thoughts that I had was when we, and I, I went back to our, our May twenty-sixth school board meeting minutes. And we extended an offer for interim superintendent to Brian Corp. And, and he'd also remain a secondary principal. I'm paraphrasing. This, this is in the meeting minutes for our May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. But it contemplated extending that offer, but also the school board supporting Mr. Corp as a coach. So my other question is, Mr. Corp from the very get-go has been absolutely crystal clear with the board with regard to his desire to coach. And it's my opinion that the board recognized that and acknowledged that and fully understood that and took that into consideration, knowing that, uh, that would be the case. Obviously, every school board, things can change from Mr. Corp's perspective or from the school board's perspective if, if, uh, you know, circumstances change that require a lot more time than anticipated with regard to certain parts of what he does for the school as, as a whole. But I think out of fairness to, in my opinion, out of fairness to Mr. Corp, my concern is that same section I referenced, which is again on page six. Section one of article eleven. It states that, and I mean, it can be interpreted a few different ways, but I think clarification is, is necessary in this case because of the, the coaching component and because of, um, his, his clarity that he provided the school district when, when he was being considered as the interim. My concern is, you know, that, that provision states that he may not engage in other employment, service, or other activity for which a salary fee or honorarium is paid without the prior approval of the school board. Now, I'm assuming that contemplates things outside of the school district, but I just do not want to see that misinterpreted by the board or future board or whomever to indicate that, um, we're not staying consistent with what we had originally recognized as the board's, um, acceptance and appreciation for him to continue to coach in the capacities that he has been coaching in. So, those are my opinions with regard to some revisions for the board to consider at tonight's meeting in an effort to provide, I think, some clarification to make it more consistent with not only the superintendent position, which he holds, but also the continuation of him serving as secondary principal together with other coaching duties that he was here from the get-go. He really was interested in, in pursuing.
Yeah, the way I take that, but, uh, with the section that you were referring to, uh, outside employment, so he'd still be a school district employee in in-school function in my mind, but, uh.
Well, the other part of that too is, uh, towards the middle of that same paragraph, again, section one, article eleven. It, it states that serve as a consultant of other school districts or educational agencies, lecture, engage in writing, speaking activities, and engage in other activities if as solely determined by the school board, such activities do not impede the superintendent's ability to run the super denancy. So I just, I, I get what you're saying, John, that I think we recognize what the intent is because we were here when the process started with Mr. Corp. But this contract perhaps will be in place for three years and, um, I would suggest considering some additional clarity to that based on my opinion in terms of what was understood when Mr. Corp was hired as interim superintendent and so long as he was able to get his license and, um, be mentored by Mr. Ness and so on and so forth. If those, if those suggestions aren't received, like, if, if, if nobody else on the board receives the message like the way I received it, you know, like, we all perceive things differently. It doesn't mean that I would not approve the contract as written, but I just, I, three years goes fast, but a lot of things can happen in three years. There's another school board election coming up two years from now, and this three-year contract will still be in place. And the board stays constant, but the individual understanding coming from each board person may change depending on who's in that position. So that's why I really encourage at least some discussion tonight as to whether or not anybody else on the board feels it's important to add some clarity and then also perhaps to get some input from you, Brian, as to whether or not that's something that seems material to you.
I don't know, I think it's on the last page, um, of the contract, one of the last pair, uh, few paragraphs, talks about, uh, some of, uh, duties. Outside activities, um, section one. So that's what that refers to with the coaching piece. The other part is, it's my understanding that this is a superintendent alongside with principal, um, when we, we met. So it's my total understanding that the both, one, we have the dean of students to handle, uh, truancy and, and discipline. So I oversee the staff at the high school with the principal piece.
So would you say you're comfortable with the language as written, Brian?
I am, yep. Totally understand what my duties are. If we want to add superintendent, principal, I'm okay with that in the contract. I'm okay with that too. I think a reorganization of our admin team has done well, um, this year, and, uh, we're going through a tough time right now, so, um, I think it can be successful to continue with it.
And again, I'm, I'm looking at it more so not, I'm looking, looking at it for clarity for the board and you, Brian, as well, just to try to avoid any uncertainty whatsoever because this conversation that we're having right now may not be heard by other board members who potentially may serve on the board within the next three years, starting on July or June, whenever the start date is, because the three years doesn't even start until June or July, but, um, I mean, to me, the risk, the risk is fairly slim, but, um, of any sort of misunderstanding, especially if our meeting minutes incorporate, uh, the majority of this discussion, uh, because I think if there was any question, um, as to interpretation, one helpful thing would be the meeting minutes and any discussions that took place regarding the intent of this contract. So I want to make it clear and I hopefully incorporate this into the minutes that if, if this contract does not get changed and it's approved as is tonight, that it's the board's position that it contemplates Mr. Corp continuing to serve as secondary principal, and it also contemplates that nothing in there should be interpreted to suggest that the board, when it executes this document, is not still in absolute support of his coaching endeavors. I'd love to see it incorporated in writing, but if, if there's nobody else that's interested in doing that, I probably wouldn't even move to approve it with those modifications. So I'd like to get a feel if anybody's willing to do so as to their thoughts or concerns, whether or not they have zero concerns of what I'm talking about, or whether they feel that maybe there are enough, um, ambiguities in the contract that could, um, create some difficulties within the next three and a half years as it relates to Mr. Corp's duties.
My, my thoughts are is, uh, in relation to the principal duties, we need some wording in that to cover that, assuming you think it'd be best to maybe table this, that Christie Hastings assists us with trying to get the property ready and then bring it back for a vote next month. Kind of my thought, and then we could address that also too, if we have to put in there something about this wasn't meant to, that article we referenced wasn't meant to interfere with the school-related activity or something like that.
And, you know, from a Minnesota statute standpoint, the school board always has the authority, you know, regardless of the employee, to take certain action. It just has to provide that action to the employee and then the employee has the right to a hearing on any sort of changes to the contract anyways. But I, and I don't want perfect to be the enemy here, and, and I'm not saying, what I'm saying is creating the perfect contract by any means. Again, please question that extremely hard when it comes to me. I just want to see it from this, and I'm really looking at it from the district's employees' perspective to have that certainty. And, and maybe I am, um, thinking about it too much based on Brian's, um, transparency and clarity that he had with us from the very get-go. I just, for his sake, I guess. And also, it goes both ways. I think sometimes more isn't better, but I think in this case, if there is some additional clarity regarding his continuation as principal, um, there'd be value to that. As well as, as the coaching, the coaching's a bit different. That, that was just a general support of, of his coaching endeavors. I'll say it one more time. I would approve the contract as drafted, but I'd really want the meeting minutes to reflect specifically as much as possible regarding his principal duties and his coaching duties. And, um, to me, to take it a step further to make it a little tighter for both parties, it would really help to incorporate the language in the actual contract. Thanks, John, for kind of giving your thoughts on the, at least reference to the principal ship. Does any other board member have any thoughts, or do you think I'm overthinking this?
No. Yeah, I apologize. That was my oversight for not reaffirming with Christie. I think she, our attorney, she, she knows what we intend on doing.
Yeah. Well, I think it protects you to have that word again.
I agree. So, Ann or Brittany, have any comments?
I guess, you know, I get what you're saying, and I want Mr. Corf comfortable too with the language. You know, providing the feedback last week might have been a little helpful, so they could have maybe gotten that in there. So going forward with, when the contract is sent out to us, if we can at least take the time to review it and give that feedback, um, if there's something missing, so they have the opportunity to address it, would be nice.
Yeah, my apologies for that.
I think it makes sense to put that word again.
Okay. So, could maybe motions to table it at next meeting? How would that work, Bart?
We can make a motion to table. We don't have a motion to approve it.
We don't have a motion to approve it. Okay, so do we even need a motion to table it?
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we table, uh, contract for, uh, Brian Corp for the purpose of, uh, additional principal language and, uh, activities, outside activities So I'll make that motion.
If we, this is not a plan, but if we were to hire a secondary principal to relieve Mr. Corp of his principal duties as superintendent, there'd be a separate contract with that principal director. Would that be a part of the contract negotiated by the union? The, any all administration is not, is none of it, none of it is negotiated by the union for administration, right? Would there be anything unique to the principal contract? As far as, I mean, I guess I'd like to see, you know, it's my understanding that our dean of students, as Mr. Corp already has expressly stated, you know, covers the truancy and disciplinary issues and stuff like that. You know, I, I think sometimes if the duties aren't specifically assigned, it's difficult to know exactly who's doing them. And I know one of the primary functions of a high school principal is teacher evaluations. I, I don't have the dean of students contract in front of me, so I don't know all of the, uh, duties under the dean of students contract. But I'm assuming it would be any and all principal activities not already covered by the dean of students position. Is that correct?
I think you guys got it all spelled out.
Yep, yep. We had a work session last, uh, of the June, in the June, and we sat down, broke up all the duties of what was our responsibilities.
Would those duties be in the dean of students' contract?
Um, in his job description.
Job description? Because I, I, I think, you know, our district, it's not as unique as it used to be, I suppose, and correct me if I'm wrong, where, uh, there's one individual serving in two capacities. But, you know, even for the general public and the legislators to understand that the dean of students does perform this function, um, might alleviate some confusion with regard to who they connect with, and it could just take some pressure off of that kind of fact finding for the general public too, to determine, do they go to principal corps or the, or the dean of students? And I think if everybody is willing to have some inconvenience right now, and again, I apologize if, when the draft was sent out that I didn't raise these issues, um, because I should have. I just wasn't thinking of that at the time. But I'd like, I mean, I think sometimes it's better to have a little inconvenience now than to have something just get created, um, down the road that, um, was unforeseen and maybe could have been presentable through some additional clarity. And that's all I have to say on the contract. Thanks for your time.
So I made a motion to table it for those reasons. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I made the motion to table it. I made the motion to table it. Greg seconded it. Any discussion before we table it? Here you go, discussion. All those in favor of table it for the next meeting? Or table it until we get it, uh, figured out? Signify by saying aye. This will be roll call. Anne, how do you resolve? Excuse me. All those in favor signify by saying aye. This will be a roll call. So we already got an aye from Anne. Brittany?
Aye.
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Table that. We've got some work to do on that.
Thanks for your time, guys. This is John and Mike. Sorry about, uh, I know they put in a lot of work on that. And I, like Anne had mentioned, um, those things could've been identified earlier. So I apologize to you two and the rest of the board, um, for, for bringing it up here at the meeting. Um, thank you for your time.
Figured it out. Okay. If there's anything else we need to go over, so next up will be upcoming meetings. We've got a work session, January fourth at six P M.
Yeah, you could.
And Mike's not gonna be here. Mrs. Welsh will be. But it's first Monday of the month. Do we need to do, make it a regular meeting or, uh,
I think.
Organizational?
Change it to a special meeting?
Yeah, we could do that. When the work session's called.
Yeah.
Okay. So we need to have a special meeting instead of the reorganization for the start of the year. So the special meetings live work session will be January fourth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Regular meeting, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. And we have MSBA virtual conference. It used to be down in Minneapolis, but it's gonna be virtual this year. And it's, uh, on three Thursdays in January, the fourteenth, the twenty-first, and the twenty-eighth. And registration closes January sixth. Here is nothing else. And also get a hold of Barb if I need to register. Here is nothing else. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mike's gonna make a motion to adjourn his last meeting. Wait for a second. I'll second. Any discussion on adjournment? Mike, it's been good, good running with you here.
Just, yeah, I have a, before we adjourn, you want the meeting to go any longer, Mike? No, good. I, I served on the board just real quickly for two years with Mike, but before that, he was a school board member for six years. And I appreciate you as a taxpayer, a parent of a student, two students that have gone to school here. He, no, I'm talking to my own kids.
Oh, I thought you were talking about Mike there.
I'm talking about me.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
As a, as, as a, a school board member with your three wonderful children, but my two children who have been part of this school district and then also serving with you on the board, um, and you filled in for that, that commencement back in twenty nineteen like a champion. And that's no, no cut towards you, John. And.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. Here is no more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We roll call again. Anne?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
We're adjourned.